I'd like to call the Duval Committee of the whole workshop to order at January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five at five thirty one PM. With that, we have the good of the order. I just want to remind council this opportunity to bring forward items for discussions, things you've heard in the community, potential agenda, future agenda items as well. So feel free to take advantage of that opportunity. Anything for the good of the order? Eric?
Yeah, and this may not be the appropriate time to talk about it. I know there's going to be public comments on the no tunnels in Duval, but in, at least in my experience, this has actually gotten more problematic, not less. And in recent times, especially on one hundred and fifty, but I know this is happening around the streets as well. It sounds more like a drag strip out there. A few, a couple of the mufflers in particular, I think, here, here, someone, I think someone actually commented, but it actually sounds like gunshots. And we're out on the street when this happens, which I've had the pleasure of being, you, you, it, it, it just about ignored you. It really sounds like gunshots going off when this particular person revs their, revs their engine. And I'm not sure exactly how we can target this, but we definitely need to do something. Will we have, will the council have more ability to comment on this after public comment? Because I'd like to hear a public comment.
So the activities that are planned for tonight are very similar to what we did for fireworks. So in the other room, Director Lashes is going back to his office to get the big map of the city. But over there, there are copies of the WAC. Chief has RCW, just, you know, in case anybody wants to ask questions. There are small eight by ten maps of the city with sticky notes. So we thought members of the community could take an eight by ten map and write on it and provide his comments, and then I will create that, you know, create a document and provide it to council. And then we'll get the big map and people can put sticky notes on it to identify areas to help inform the discussion. And then certainly if anyone wants to stay for public comment, they can provide a public comment or the papers that we receive and use those as public comments. And then, you know, totally up to Mayor Pretending Council if you want to put it on the agenda again after tonight.
Yeah, I think following that exercise, we'll have some idea of density and where communities are, which may drive some other future discussions as well. Yeah, I think following that exercise, we'll have some idea of density and where communities are, which may drive some other future discussions as well.
Okay, so as far as more comments tonight, then the council will, will be discussing it? Okay, so as far as more comments tonight, then the, the council will, will be discussing it?
There's not an agenda item on the council, uh, council agenda, if that's what you're asking. There's not an agenda item on the council, uh, council agenda, if that's what you're asking. But based on the feedback we get tonight, that's definitely something that's council we can recommend for, for future. But based on the feedback we get tonight, that's definitely something that's council we can recommend for, for future.
Okay, yeah, the, my concern is this is a safety issue, not only a nuisance issue. Okay, yeah, the, my concern is this is a safety issue, not only a nuisance issue. Certainly, this is a safety issue. Certainly, this is a safety issue. Again, in certain zones that were, these people are speeding at the same time as, as they're, you know, sounding off their muffler. Again, in certain zones that were, these people are speeding at the same time as, as they're, you know, sounding off their muffler. And even if they're not speeding, I know one particular individual, in, in particular, And even if they're not speeding, I know one particular individual, in, in particular, they can pop their clutch in they can pop their clutch in and make it sound, you know, horrific. and make it sound, you know, horrific. And it's just about giving me a heart attack a few times. And it's just about giving me a heart attack a few times. And I suspect there's a few other people who were started to say the, say the least. And I suspect there's a few other people who were started to say the, say the least. But we'll see where a public comment goes. But we'll see where a public comment goes.
I have some items, but due to the, you know, time constraints, I was told that I could ask some questions I have some items, but due to the, you know, time constraints, I was told that I could ask some questions in the regular council meeting during our council reports. in the regular council meeting during our council reports. So I just, I would like to hold off on asking the good of the order type questions until then. So I just, I would like to hold off on asking the good of the order type questions until then.
The only thing I wanted to add is we do, we, we mentioned the upcoming council retreat in tentatively scheduled for March. The only thing I wanted to add is we do, we, we mentioned the upcoming council retreat in tentatively scheduled for March. I have some preliminary ideas. I would love to hear from council. I have some preliminary ideas. I would love to hear from council. This is primarily going to just be a council only retreat. This is primarily going to just be a council-only retreat. So if there's topics, agenda items, things we want to sort of workshop as a council. So if there's topics, agenda items, things we want to sort of workshop as a council. And then that will sort of inform whether we do it within here as, as a part of a council hall meeting And then that will sort of inform whether we do it within here as, as a part of a council hall meeting or we set up a sort of a dedicated session. or we set up a sort of a dedicated session. So any feedback you have, feel free to follow up with an email. So any feedback you have, feel free to follow up with an email. That, review of the regular meeting agenda. That, review of the regular meeting agenda. Are there any requests for, I know we have a fairly small consent agenda this evening, Are there any requests for, I know we have a fairly small consent agenda this evening, but any changes to the agenda and or items to be pulled from the consent agenda into the community? but any changes to the agenda and or items to be pulled from the consent agenda into the community? So with that, we will move into our discussion items. So with that, we will move into our discussion items. The first being the community discussion regarding muffler noise. The first being the community discussion regarding muffler noise. I know City Administrator Macabre already made a couple of comments about process, I know City Administrator Macabre already made a couple of comments about process, but if you want to sort of share that with the broader ring, I think Director Lashes is back with the maps, I believe. but if you want to sort of share that with the broader ring, I think Director Lashes is back with the maps, I believe.
And certainly, so, I mean, the goal was to have an opportunity for the community to engage in a relatively And certainly, so, I mean, the goal was to have an opportunity for the community to engage in a relatively low tech way, whether council members can have those conversations. low-tech way, whether council members can have those conversations. So I put materials in the other room, structured a little bit like how we did the fireworks conversation. So I put materials in the other room, structured a little bit like how we did the fireworks conversation. As well, all convene to the other room, the community can have an opportunity to talk to council, As well, all convene to the other room, the community can have an opportunity to talk to council, share their concerns, their papers for the community members to note share their concerns, their papers for the community members to note any comments that they want to provide if they run out and come to the sitting hall and get more. any comments that they want to provide if they run out and come to the sitting hall and get more. And then we have a big map now for members of the community to use post-it notes And then we have a big map now for members of the community to use post-it notes and identify areas that you believe are of issue in the city for muffler noise. and identify areas that you believe are of issue in the city for muffler noise. And that will certainly help our police department gather information. And that will certainly help our police department gather information. And that's what I have planned for tonight, but totally up to council. And that's what I have planned for tonight, but totally up to council. If you want to formalize with public comments after, you can certainly go to add a public comment If you want to formalize with public comments after, you can certainly go to add a public comment in this agenda item, if you were going to make it more formal than the informal process that I put together. in this agenda item, if you were going to make it more formal than the informal process that I put together.
Yeah, I, I just want to add to that, I want to acknowledge, I mean, this will come out in the council meeting, Yeah, I, I just want to add to that, I want to acknowledge, I mean, this will come out in the council meeting, but we did receive some public comment already, an email that was distributed to council. but we did receive some public comment already, an email that was distributed to council. So we've had an opportunity to review that. So we've had an opportunity to review that. I would encourage folks that are here tonight, you know, even if you've sent in public comment I would encourage folks that are here tonight, you know, even if you've sent in public comment to communicate that with council and elaborate on it. to, to communicate that with council and elaborate on it. I think the exercises will give us a good place to start. I think the exercises will give us a good place to start. And then similar to the fireworks conversation, depending on where we are with time, And then similar to the fireworks conversation, depending on where we are with time, we can come back as a group and potentially summarize some of that findings and, and then take things from, from there. we can come back as a group and potentially summarize some of that findings and, and then take things from, from there. But I think the hands-on exercise, particularly with the map, and an opportunity to provide direct feedback But I think the hands-on exercise, particularly with the map, and an opportunity to provide direct feedback on your own experiences and where we should focus attention is great. on your own experiences and where we should focus attention is great. So we're good with that. So we're good with that.
Would, would it be appropriate to read the public comment we see related to muffler noise since we're gonna? Would, would it be appropriate to read the public comment we see related to muffler noise since we're gonna?
Yeah, that I don't know the process typically, because it, it, it may be, but I'll defer to City Administrator. Yeah, that I don't know the process typically, because it, it, it may be, but I'll defer to City Administrator.
I thought it might be useful for everyone to hear, to hear that. I thought it might be useful for everyone to hear, to hear that.
So our council rules right now are that we don't read written comment that we receive So our council rules right now are that we don't read written comment that we receive into the record verbally. into the record verbally. But certainly council can, is it part of your council report or part of tonight's proceeding? But certainly council can, is it part of your council report or part of tonight's proceeding? Go ahead and review them and read them with the community. Go ahead and review them and read them with the community. But our council rules right now under public comments is that we don't read written comments into the record. But our council rules right now under public comments is that we don't read written comments into the record.
Okay, can I comment on one then? Is that okay? Okay, can I comment on one then? Is that okay?
Well, it would have typically been good in the order or through council reports, which we'll have later. Well, it would have typically been good in the order or through council reports, which we'll have later. So there will be an opportunity to sort of make that into a council. So there will be an opportunity to sort of make that into a council. And then I would also, I think, as City Administrator mentioned, anyone who wants to provide public comment And then I would also, I think, as City Administrator mentioned, anyone who wants to provide public comment in the council meeting tonight is also welcome to do that. in the council meeting tonight is also welcome to do that. So with that, we can sort of break out into the other room and. So with that, we can sort of break out into the other room and.
What was that? What was that? Just again, I'm sorry. Just again, I'm sorry.
... can move us on to the second discussion, which is consideration of revenue options for city financing with city administrator.
Good evening. I have members of the community still listening in and Mayor, the Council. So this is just the first kind of scratch at some of the information that council requested for informing decisions on whether or not the council would vote to authorize any ballot initiatives. And so at the last council meeting, some basic information was requested, so I wanted to bring that to council tonight. And then as council has more opportunity to think about the kinds of information you need and what you need to inform your decision making on this topic. I'll each week kind of take a crack at providing council some information. And right now it just is a rolling agenda item so that, you know, before decisions have to be made, you have all the information you need. So from the last meeting, the request was to provide information about timing on the ballot initiatives as well as to provide background information on the type of decisions that would be before council. So your council packet had a lot of information. There was a Department of Revenue guide. There was a guide from Association Washington Cities. So there's a lot of background information on the types of ballot initiatives that you can go out for, whether it's sales tax or levy lid lifts. And so this is the PowerPoint I put together is not summarizing all that information because it was hundreds of pages, but kind of just the the quick bit of information that was requested from the last council meeting. So the first three slides are the timing for each of the three upcoming ballot initiatives. So April. April is a special ballot or special election, so it has some limitations on the types of things you can bring to the April ballot. So for instance, the April ballot, you cannot bring sales tax initiative. So if council was considering a public safety sales tax on the April ballot. So the April ballot only allows for a single year levy lid lift initiatives or other kind of referendum issues, but not a multi-year levy lid lift or a sales tax initiative. So if council is considering doing a single year levy lid lift, and there are a couple more slides in this presentation that talk a little bit about the difference between multi-year and a single year levy. It could be brought on the April ballot and the decision, so the deadline to file the resolution with the county auditor is February 21st, and then we have to back that up a bit in order to prepare the resolution in order to get it to the auditor in time for the April ballot. And then moving forward, the first day to publish a notice of special election, so that's an April ballot. Next slide. So the primary and the general, you can run almost any initiative on either of those ballots. So on August, you can do the sales tax initiatives as well as a single and multi-year levy lid lift. So the date you would need to file a resolution for the August election is May 2nd. So a little more time if you want to get on the August ballot, and then the election this year for the primary is August 5th. And then finally, the November general, same thing. You can do any of the initiatives in November. And interestingly, the date for filing the resolution is the same day as the general and the primary. So we would have to kind of have things prepped, even if you don't know the outcome of the primary to put something on the November general election ballot. And then I did not do the February ballot, but the February is also a special, so you could not run a sales tax initiative or a multi-year levy on the February. So the rest of the PowerPoint, these are taken directly from an MRC article that's in the packet, but it offers a description of the difference between a single year levy and a multi-year levy, and there are charts in this slide deck that shows you what the difference is. So the first on the single year levy, again, you can run this on April as well as August and November. It is a one bump lid lift. It operates for any lawful government purpose, including general government operations, and there are no supplanting limitations, meaning you can use it for almost any governmental purpose. A single year levy lid lift can be both temporary and permanent, which then, and there'll be charts to show this, it sets your base at different rates so that every year when you take the 1%, your base looks a little different. At different rates so that every year when you take the one percent, your base looks a little different. So next slide. So the temporary single year levy. It allows the city to increase the maximum levy by more than one percent for one year only. And then that amount is then used as a base to calculate all subsequent one percent levy limitations for the duration of the levy. So that's the temporary. So then the next slide. This shows you what it looks like for a temporary, single year levy. So you get the one-time bump. Then you have the base set at the rate of the one-time bump. And then it would revert back to what it would have been without the levy lid lift. Is your temporary single year. Next slide.
Hey, Sophie, can you, I'm sorry, can you go back to the?
Yeah. I should also note that this is not my area of expertise, so I'm. Just providing information on the M R C. So at some point, we would want. Specializes in elections to answer kind of deep levy questions, but happy to answer what I can.
To understand, yeah, no, I did just, you know, this is, you know, what I gather when I read the material as well, but. But here you, you know, increased things for the misexample five years and then boom, you're hit. You're you're hit all over again. This, to me, this sounds like it's just a really bad. But, but, you know, that was just. It's something my first thought.
I think this is a little confusing because it indicates that there's more than. If the horizontal axis is years, how can it be a single year temporary levy lid lift? If it's going five years.
So single year is a misnomer. So a single year is a one-time buff. A one-time lift that can reset your base for a period of time. It can either reset your base temporarily. And then you go back to a cliff and that would be as if you never had a lid lift at all.
But that's not just for one, you can set the.
Direct, you can set the duration for.
Five years or.
To five years, yes. Multi-year levies are six years. Single year can be sent set for under six years. Over multiple years, even though they're called a single year levy.
Okay, so the single year applies to the lift, but then that lift carries forward until it expires. So it's it's a little. So can you guys, and the slide following this, what is the multi-year?
Yeah, so if you go to a single year permanent.
Pass more, not me, you had a question about this particular slide.
Yeah, I want to double check. My understanding was the lid lift that we did for the. Big Rock Ball Field and the police and tech. Was this type of single year temporary lid lift and then it expires. Is that right?
I would have to double check. I thought it was a multi-year, six-year.
It, um.
But I, I, I don't know the answer, so I'm going to answer, I don't.
Okay, yeah, because it bumped up one time and then it kind of remained at this higher amount, growing at the one percent. And then it completely drops off. That's my understanding of our, the current levy and why we're. You know, going to do such a huge drop off.
Yeah, I can get the answer to the specific way that was structured. It predates me at the next meeting. Okay, so then you have your single year permanent. Again, this is a misnomer. It is a single lid lift. But it bumps up the one percent in the first year. But then everything after is at that higher bumped up rate. So it's a single year bump. But then a single year permanent will keep that base. Indefinitely. So if you go to the next slide. That's what it looks like. You don't revert back to what it was prior to the single year bump. Questions about this one? And then you have your multi-year levies that have quite a few more restrictions on them. Multi-year levy and again, the two, one restriction for the purposes of the ballots is a multi-year levy can only be put on. August and November. It can be used for any purpose, but the ballot on this has to state the limited purchase. For which the increased levy will be used. So different than a single, single year lid lift. Which does not have this stated requirement to identify specifically what it would be used for. The multi-year levy, you have to say, for instance, and again, I'll double check with the S R O check line. But that one. Has the features of a multi-year levy, like we're going to buy I T equipment, we're going to use it for an S O that's highly specialized. So on the multi-year levy, you have to list exactly what you are seeking it for. And the lift must state the total tax rate for the first year only. It cannot state the maximum rate in future years. You have to identify your maximum limit factor. Multi-year lid lifts can also be temporary. Or permanent. So if you go to the, and they're six years typically. So if you go to the next slide. So your temporary multi-year levy. Will be the levy lid bumps up more than one percent each year, subject to the limit factor for up to six years. And then when that lift, lid lift expires. The levy reverts to what it would have been had it never existed. So similar to the single year, but the single year is a one-time bump. Year can. Increase over six years. So the next slide shows that.
Your permanent, not that we're considering this, but just trying to put some theory around an example, that could be something, for example. That's indexed to the cost of living increase or something where there's an index factor that then is exceeding over multiple years.
Yeah. And then finally, your permanent. Temporary or your permanent multi-year levy. If you go to the next slide. Is you bump up the levy lid more than one percent. For up to six years, but then it doesn't revert. And then if you go to the next slide, that's what it looks like. So you have that higher threshold because it never reverts back. So those are your options that are available to you on the levy, the types of levy lid lifts. That you can go to. The multi-year can again be put on August and. November ballots. So this is just kind of scratching the surface, trying to make sure that council has over time information that you need. Happy to answer any questions and then open the floor if there are things that you want for the next meeting for me to prepare. For council.
Thanks. So with the timeline or, you know, what timeline could look like, I know we had talked about bringing on a consultant at some point if we pursue this for sure. To help navigate that. I'm feeling it would also be helpful to get their thoughts on which of these would be most successful. I know there's a lot of factors that go into. I mean, some of these have been failing a lot or, you know, successful or not for different jurisdictions and these consultants work with those people, so they might have more insight into. Perhaps, you know, a certain kind is more likely to pass than others for these reasons, you know, and that kind of insight would be helpful. I know I can research a bit, but I just wouldn't have the insight that somebody who works on that all the time would. So for me, that would be one of the biggest things. I mean, I think you could make almost any of them work, some are more favorable than others, but at the end of the day, it would be really, that would be good to have that kind of insight from a consultant.
And we did budget for the anticipating that that might be requests of council. In the count for a consultant that would help inform some of those decisions, more of the political decisions than. You know, the practical figuring out what the tax rate is. The packet also had, so M R C has this pretty nifty tool where you can go in and type the type of initiative. So I included in the packet every parks initiative for the last five years. As well as every police initiative, so you can see kind of the relative success of different. Types of initiatives that have been on the ballot in the last five years. But yeah, certainly, happy to research, happy to provide information, but at some point. Somebody with more expertise, I think, would help on the political front. And I can tell you that when. I was at K C L S in twenty twenty, before the pandemic, we were prepping to do. Voter initiative and we had a consultant that helped us in that effort.
Pass member that flow. And then customer safer.
Um, so I wasn't at the last meeting and I did watch it and. If I remember right, it was the same meeting that the school district was in attendance about the resource officer. And it reminded me of. Kind of some of the concerns that the committee had. About that levy. Because it covered the resource officer and one of them was. You know, why should City of Dubal pay for the resource officer that? Supports the entire district. And there was definitely some questioning of, you know, why doesn't Carnation help pay for that or King County? So. In about two thousand nineteen, when we were renewing. And bar agreement with the school district. I did a little bit of research to see, well, how much of our population, tax-based household. Is represented at the school district. And it runs depending on if you're looking at your assessed value or population between like thirty and thirty-five percent. That's our portion of the district. And I also looked to see what there's. For their cost sharing. And I looked at City of Snohomish, Snohomish School District, Stanwood, Stanwood, Penino Island. North Shore, Snohomish County, Edmonds School District, Snohomish County. So there are quite a few different districts and just to see how they structured it. And we were by far, I think, the only. City that one hundred percent paid for the cost by city taxpayers. In most cases, there was. A significant cost share where the school district actually funded the majority of it in most cases. Not all. So anyway. I, I suspect that type of question. If we run a. A levy that includes covering a resource officer. And so the question I would have is, could we kind of refresh this information and try to figure out like what other districts do? So if we get asked that, we can say. Hey, we're doing what's typical or. Something like that. And so I can provide this little. Breakdown and it would be really helpful to kind of see what is happening now. Or who's paying for the resource officer, because honestly, we're in a really big budget crisis. Not saying others aren't as well, but. We have limited resources, so I, I would really like to see. The analysis of what. What other jurisdictions.
Let's see, as far as the temporary measures, I would have a really difficult time supporting any of those. To me, it seems like I'm just pushing the financial clip down the road. I think this is unfair to, to the city, to, to our taxpayers. Unless we can absolutely assure them that, hey, after five years, we don't need this much money anymore. And I don't think we can do that. That would be a hard story to, to get across. So in my mind, the only viable ones are the permanent. Love eclipse. Those, I believe, also have a hard road. To hope because. As I think each of us knows, the property tax is ridiculously high. I was shocked when I first moved here seven years ago. I'm still shocked every year that I receive, receive my property tax statement. There's people here that are, that are, you know, close to not being able to pay their property tax, close to having to move somewhere else because our property tax is high. So this is not something we can take lightly here. I, we are asking people to pay more property tax and a lot of people are not going to be willing to do that. A lot of people are not going to be able. To, to do that. So something for us to keep in mind as we consider this more deeply.
Anything to add? Yeah, there's a levy, the, the requires sixty percent or fifty percent.
It's so bonds require sixty, levy requires fifty. Well, fifty plus one.
This is my second question, so. Okay. Or I guess it's just more of a preference to state that, you know, timing wise with a. Ballot, when we know we're going to have things on the ballot in November this year, that ideally it would be cheaper to aim for that and not. So if we're going for a ballot for some strategy, you know, it would cost us way more if we don't have anything on the ballot. So knowing that this is one of the years we do have things on the ballot already, it can be relatively cheaper by quite a lot. I think to just add something to it. So, you know, and then of course, we wouldn't know ahead of time or until maybe it's too late if we're going to even have a primary ballot too that we would have things on. So. Just something to think about, at least in my mind, I want to go for the cheaper option overall, especially when we don't know, you know, to some of the other comments like how well this will do, so.
To Mayor Pertham's comment, it does make sense to. If it's feasible to do more valid measures on one ballot. I just, you know, really want to stress that. Without doing levies, the funding for our big rock goes away. What are we going to do with that park? And if there are not. Other funding options that cover this. So that actually cover the needs of these facilities and. I really want to encourage council to really strongly consider what services you're willing to do without at the City of Dubal because it's not a question. Of if we have to cut services, it's a matter of how much those cuts have to be if we do not continue a levy. This is not uncommon. This is a, a function of the tax structure in Washington State. It's inequitable in many, many ways. Sales taxes are aggressive and hurts the lowest income of our communities the most. Because those people rent and they pay sales tax. And as a per capita of their income, their taxes are much higher than most of the rest of us. But, you know, we have done significant work actually in the city over the last twenty years to shore up. Our facilities, shore up our services, and in particularly the last seven years. Really focus on providing the services that we're required to provide. And doing the best we can to provide the services that our community is asking for. And without moving forward with tax measures, this body is going to be faced with significant cuts in the coming year. And have to choose between your ball fields and your police officers. Or your front office staff and planning staff and meeting statutory requirements, public safety. Or the joy of the community. There's no in-between. There is no bluff, as we all know. And so I just really will continue to stress and encourage. This body and the community to think really long and hard about is that short-term. Impact of potentially not asking for this money worth the long-term damage. That you'll do not only to the financial future of the city, but also the health of our community. Thank you.
And before you go, I just sort of wanted to weigh in a little bit and it somewhat aligns with, with what the mayor just shared. I, I think for me, there's a. City administrator laid out, there's a, there's a sequence of events that happened. February doesn't seem viable to me, just simply because of the short runway. I think the, the primary versus the general election sort of is an open question, but for me, from a sequencing perspective, it's really. We got some good information or high-level information from the consultant in terms of budget gaps, but it didn't really get down to that micro level that was very high level. I think from a council, you know, for me, it's really understanding. With more clarity that the actual budget gaps at a, at a dollar level, like what those are over what period of time and really starting to understand those that will then go into crafting. What specific levy is most appropriate? Because I think this is very much of a scalpel exercise versus sort of the sledgehammer. We want to, you know. Set ourselves up per council member Schaefer's. You know, approach that we're not sort of this, not necessarily once and done, but we're not revisiting this multiple times. We want to do it right the first time. By crafting the right sort of mix of, of things. The other is, I think we've learned, looking at surrounding communities, these. Multiple initiative or, or multiple item levies don't particularly work out well. So again, whether it's a mixture of. A sales tax with a levy focused on parks versus public safety, even the conversation about the resource officer, you know, if it's even funding a. Proportional percentage, but we're then creating, you know, a funding stream to feed into that and we negotiate with the City of Carnation, you know, that, that makes sense to me. But I think for me, that first step is really understanding. The need and then sort of targeting the solution to the need. So. From a timing perspective, sooner sounds rather than later. From a timing perspective, sooner sounds rather than later. Um but I do also think there's an opportunity even at the retreat to solidify and align on our priorities and what as a council we think are. You know, where we really want to focus those resources and then uh in the interim uh work with staff to get some additional insight and information. To clarify by that. So without uh uh council member Dan, then you had to follow.
Yeah, and I I don't know if that was discussed at the last meeting. I don't remember, but do we have any idea of when um fire the school districts? Maybe the King County Parks levy, when those will fall? Maybe you'd already told us, but.
Um so I did have an opportunity to talk to Mayor Pertem about this um and Councilmember Isadson asked at the last meeting, so. Two things, when it becomes public and not rumor speculation, I'm more than happy to bring. To counsel what folks are saying in a public manner about what ballot they're going to. Separately, due to relationships and um. You know, different conversations I have, I'm privy to speculation and thoughts of people who are not to. Who probably are in a position to know but cannot speak for their agency. And so I want to be really careful about the things that people are telling me that are speculative. And what folks are saying this is going to happen. So for instance, we know parks is probably gonna be uh King County Parks. Is uh likely going likely going to be November, maybe August, but they're saying November. But again, that's speculative. Uh we do know that there is going to be an EMS levy as well as a fire. The fire, though, is a continuing resolution. It's not new money. It's continuing their levy that they currently have, but it will be. Probably prior to November, but anything else um. I not will say outright that I know, even though I might generally know until until their. Public Information Officer or some person with authorities speak.
I and I think given its public record and and some of this has been shared in confidence, I think some of that's understandable. I think the piece, though, just to sort of. Piggyback on a little bit, but but what you said is, I think having awareness of that is important, but at the same time. We need to do what we need to do and that's, I think, where the crafted messaging and working with the consultant to really. Um engage with the community early to really build build the case for it. Um but I think that's a hard thing. I there's definitely fatigue. That's what we're Shaffer said, but the other part is sort of that if you if you're not gonna deliver via a levy, then you have to have the other conversation. Which is around the kind of services that we're also gonna have to engage and communicate. So I think that's where getting the community is really is really helpful too, but. Um when you can share, you know, is great, but but also understand that there's a trust.
Yeah, uh really, can I? Um so I do check the um every week I have a notice on Friday to check the. There's a system in Washington where you can uh look at what has been filed, whether it's first people running for public office, referendums, ballot initiatives. So I check every Friday and as soon as I see something has been filed that would, you know, be relevant to the ballot initiatives, I'll start like.
And I would just say that in general, um with our existing levies, we know what's going to immediately be on the chopping block. Um if a levy does not move forward or. Um beyond that, I think it's not difficult to surmise um how much funding we estimate based on our Vianian budget. Um and what we need to um continue to provide service levels and continue to. Uh bring staff in our building some facilities up to a level where we are reducing risk. Um for example, with WCA. WCA brought to us last fall um and that we are still at significant risk because of our staffing levels in certain areas. Um and that's another thing that, you know, we can bring that forward. Um and it's another really important thing to be considering uh because the cost of a lawsuit is a lot more than. Out of taxpayers' pockets is a lot more than the cost of the taxes to begin with. Um so thinking about that long term, uh I'm sure that we can come forward with. Uh some broad brush um information, then of course, uh when the cuts actually happen, it goes down to a very deliberate process. The legislative body and uh making those decisions.
I just wanted to add one clarification that's been brought up regarding the school resource officer. That person is solely for the city of Duval. We don't do any. Contract work with Carnation, so it is strictly at the high school and part of the Duval Police Department.
Um I just want to circle back around and find out if councils a whole wants certain work performed before the next meeting. Um so I heard a request to do an analysis of other cities. Um of the split in how they pay for a school resource officer, so.
Yeah, I I mean, my only comment based on the chief's comment there is if this is purely targeted in into Duval. I I think having a conversation around funding streams is still relevant, but it sounds like we wouldn't be doing a split and that was some of the feedback we got from the. City is.
So just to give you a little clarification, I come from the City of Duval and we do have a. A financial split in funding for a school resource officer, but it's the North School School District, so it has. Four high schools in the school district and each we only cover one. And it is a partial share with us, uh the City of Duval and North Shore. The other contracts with the other agencies like Snohomish County is totally separate. A lot of that has to do with the financial stability of the school district, right? So uh I don't have that information from the school district here in Duval. I know that um there are certain locations that do have a totally funded by levy position, but I know there are also a number that. You talked about that are are cost share, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um the reason I brought up King County and Carnation is. Cedar Crest High School serves students that live in those areas and so while yes, the high school is located physically. Inside our SCAB limits, it's providing a service to students that primarily don't live inside Duval, only about like thirty percent of it. Student population potentially are from Duval. So I I understand what you're saying, but I I just wanted to clarify what I was.
Thank you. I I appreciate that clarification. It is a structure, a critical infrastructure of the City of Duval. Um where ultimately we do have the responsibility of protecting and serve. Uh even though we have people that travel from outside the area towards a business in town, we still have a responsibility to serve those citizens and. And individuals that don't reside in town that can work. So I kind of look at that as as not necessarily. I'm gonna help pay for somebody from outside the area for a service. It is a service that, just like a business. That has a higher population during normal business days that we have to make sure we have the proper. Care and safety services for that school district and we all know that um. In the news, we always read about the terrible things that happen if um if we don't have somebody there. And I always have that fear in my mind um because it's not uncommon for that to happen in our state. And so I just want to make sure there's clarification that we don't go to. To Carnation to help serve the schools and the school district. We primarily, this is where we are, so.
Yeah, so I I think to your question to the broader and and I'll sort of look to the other council members, I think, having an idea, but. If you don't want the chief said, it's not clear to me the mechanism, whether that's an interlock and whether it's just approaching with Carnation to help. There's there's a couple of different things. I think that's be helpful. I don't sound like, um but I don't know how much work is involved in 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 that, so. And we have a couple other asks as well, so.
Yeah, so the two I heard was that analysis. I mean, I think, you know, pulling a sampling of life size. School districts um. I I I could probably find it within a reasonable period of time. I don't know that it would be overly burdensome. Um you know, it's also, we're not talking about twenty school districts, you know, I'm talking about like five to ten.
That's in general, yeah.
I I think for me, like if there was some um shallow scoop of research that, you know, made sense time wise. Because I don't know how much time that would take. Um I was trying to figure out how it would alter what we do. Um depending on what we find. So you know, if you have a school district that there's an inclination toward, you know, a really rough budget as well. So if we find out, okay, here's kind of the usual cost share, but they're not going to do it, then what do we do? We put the bill or we just don't have one, kind of, right? So if that, i- if seeing this research is what council needs to. Make that decision, I guess. I'm just trying to figure out how it would, you know, benefit um that knowing what we know about the outside. Um contributors, right? Um and I don't think City of Carnation has ever contributed to SRO position, at least not, yeah. So anyways, those are just my thoughts. I don't have a, you know. Uh a hard yes or no on it. I'm just thinking if there's a reasonable amount to contribute, but like, think about how that actually. You know, weighs on your decision to what if that would be added in to be funded fully by City of Duval.
Yeah, I don't know. If Councilmember Schaefer or Councilmember Supple have to weigh in on that, that's sort of mine. It's a nice to have, but it's not that we're not necessarily. We care about the citizens to do all regardless and there's an economy of scale there. They're there. We're gonna do it anyway, so um but lots.
And my thought is, I think along the lines, but you were saying, Ron, I uh I'm actually more than. Besides school resource officer, I'm actually more interested in what would be on the chopping block. Uh if uh we don't, you know, aren't successful with levy, we have to know that anyway because there's no guarantee. That levy uh or increased sales tax would pass. So we need to be aware of uh that and plan accordingly if that happens. And as council, we need to understand what's on the chopping block to uh to make the decision. Do we want to actually, you know, increase taxes? Uh or do we want to cut cut costs?
Um so it's kind of a a with Councilmember Schaefer's comment and um. Uh what Mayor Pertemmer sort of suggested about knowing kind of with more detail on what those budget cap gaps are. I think maybe by March, I would be able to give you a plan, but it is. Is so directed by what council would prioritize. So I can give you a staffing plan of. This is potentially not life self, not life, health, safety and the potentially risk. Reduction of services, but it's entirely up to council to decide. Like, I can give you my idea of what. Might happen, but it absolutely is not my decision, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's really at more of a department level or resourcing level and then what those specific. Cuts are or adjustments or reductions in service ultimately is a council decision. So kind of what I heard, I know you didn't weigh in. Councilmember Supple feel free is in the aggregate, I think there's an interest in getting better sense of where. We need to fund in terms of level scale beyond T-shirt sizing, but some with some specificity, but not necessarily. This is what we have to do because at the end of the day, that's down to what we we decide on the specific matter of the. The resource officer, I think, you know, I'd almost rather approach that through Carnation sort of indirectly. Be be rather than a funding stream more of there's something we could do to understanding that there's a value, but I also understand that Carnation's facing some of the same. Budget constraints that we have, so I don't know, you know, sort of how 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 we're welcome to do. So to to Councilmember McHenry's, if there's sort of a shallow scoop. On that other item without going too deep, I think that would be beneficial and help sort of answer some of your questions and then. The primary focus, I think, is really around understanding the the budget impact so that we can start to to craft. Or or direction craft.
Now, now we have like a few chances to pass the levy if we go that way. Because it's this year and then you'd also have the opportunity next year to pass eleven or less.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, um so the idea of starting in twenty five is that if it failed, you would have the opportunity to. Well, you could put a single year on February, you could put a single year on April and then you could do sales tax in August and. Uh November um the runway. The the. Based on what we learned from the municipal um sustainability plan is the major cuts would come in twenty seven. They would still have some initiatives in twenty six if you're first crack at it to be passed. And several jurisdictions did that strategically, like like Gig Harbor. Um tried for a levy um and I I don't know exactly how they structured theirs, like what they put into the pot, but um. They had a levy initiative fail and then the next ballot, they went out for a sales uh public safety sales tax that passed, so. Seven jurisdictions are going out for maybe the big ask. And then if it doesn't pass, structuring something a little more targeted for the next different ballots.
Since we start later, you can sort of divide and and but if you push it too far forward and you lose your service, that can bite at the apple.
It's something that a consultant would provide often.
Yeah, there are at least three that I know of um because I was involved in their um interviews at KCL that specialize in. This ballot for this thing is more successful um far more than I would be able to.
So a quick time check, I know uh we had one item that we didn't get to. Okay, so we can do that. I didn't know if we wanted to carry it over or if we wanted to just push up to seven and and then if the mayor could be.
I believe the SRO levy sunset this year.
It does, yes.
So if that's not taken care of, we will not.
Yeah, I sort of, and that and that includes funding for Big Rock.
So it with um.
I said one quick. Before we leave this meeting, I don't want there to be a rumor that I'm trying to get Carnation to pay for this. I was giving an example. Uh that most districts do have a cost share with the city and often it's the school district. And the hosting city. So in our case, we host the high school inside city limits. And we have a cost share with the school district. So I was just trying to clarify that we have lots of students from other places and so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And the superintendent shared some perspective on that in the last meeting as well, but uh the additional clarity. So with that, I think if the mayor will grace us as sort of a short break before the meeting, uh city, yeah, we'll move to the next agenda item. Or not agenda item, but a discussion item.
Uh so when we passed back in the beginning of twenty twenty three, the civility policy. Um and this really deals with folks that come into city facilities. Um one of the requests was that I were brought to council every year, whether or not we exercise a policy. And do an NO report and I am happy to report that we did not have to issue any notices of trespass, bans, warnings. There was one email that I wrote to an individual in Utah who had called our front desk staff um and was fairly abusive. And um I wrote to them reminding them of what the uh civility requirements were for folks that. Work with city staff and uh that I would expect. Uh a different way of communicating with our front desk and that was it.
Thank you. So with that, I will uh call the.
Yavel again. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty five Duval City Council meeting to order at seven oh three P M. If you at all, please rise and join me in a flex. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, and God, and this law, and liberty, and justice. First, we please take the roll.
Yes. Uh, Mayor Okerlander. Here, Mayor Porton Mercer.
Here.
Mister Isaacson. Mister Schaefer.
Here.
Miss McHenry.
Here.
Mister Supple.
Here.
Miss Snafly.
Here.
Miss Kufel.
Uh, Councilmember Kufel has submitted an excused absence. Um, do you have a court? Um, with that, uh, if uh, council would like to add Councilmember Kufel's um, excuse absence to uh, consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, and do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
So moved.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to proclamations. Uh, we have one proclamation this evening. It is National Freedom Day and I will go ahead and read that into the record. Whereas National Freedom Day observed annually on February first marks the signing of the thirteenth amendment to the U S Constitution in eighteen sixty five. Which abolished slavery and reinforced the nation's core principles of liberty, justice and equality for all. And whereas National Freedom Day serves as a reminder, the sacrifices made by countless individuals throughout history who fought for freedom and equality. Urging us to reflect on our continued pursuit of justice and equal opportunity for all. And whereas this day provides an opportunity to acknowledge the progress our nation has made in securing freedom for individuals. While recognizing the ongoing work required to ensure that freedom is fully realized for all, regardless of rate, race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation. Religion or socioeconomic status. And whereas the city of Duval with its diverse and inclusive community believes that freedom is a fundamental right that belongs to all people. And we share the responsibility to protect and uphold the freedoms guaranteed by our constitution. And whereas National Freedom Day encourages us to reflect on the core values of our nation. Recognizing the vital role of individual rights, civic engagement and social responsibility. And shaping a just and equitable society for current and future generations. And whereas the city of Duval is committed to fostering a community where all people are respected, welcomed and given the opportunity to thrive. And where we actively work together to eliminate injustice, inequality and discrimination. And whereas we honor the legacy of those who have fought for the freedoms we enjoy today and acknowledge that the struggle for justice and equality continues. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim February first, twenty twenty five as National Freedom Day in the city of Duval. I encourage all residents to reflect on the importance of freedom, unity and equality and to celebrate the ongoing efforts to preserve these ideals in our nation. Thank you. Um, now we will move on to comments from the audience and I will go ahead and read. Uh, the council rules on public comments into the record. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration. While representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to P O box thirteen hundred, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine. Or deposited at the city hall drop box located at one five five three five Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards and its commissions solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently turn us them to the city council or the relevant board or commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the noon deadline for written comments will be shared with the council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. And with that, if you have any members um, of the audience in attendance here this evening, you are welcome to approach the podium and provide your name. Um, organization as applicable um, and address and you will have uh, between three and five minutes to speak depending on if you're an individual or a group.
Evening everybody. My name is Darren Bennett. I reside in Duval. I'm here tonight representing Cedar Crest Mountain Bike Club. Uh, continuing the conversation regarding uh, Duval open space and the potential for trails uh, in that area. Um, I wanted to inform the council and those attending that I had a meeting on December thirteenth. With Evergreen, uh, the representative, uh, Brandon Lester, who is one of their volunteer coordinators and also uh, helps. Build out um, the proposals that are, are, you know, delivered to cities and municipalities and that. Uh, we walked the open space property for approximately an hour. Uh, it was a pretty wet and cold day, but uh, we got to explore the terrain and give them a firsthand view of, of what, you know, the, the property's like. Uh, explain some of the history of, of what's been done and uh, you know, really see it. And I've provided uh, to the council members by the city clerk. Uh, the two proposals that were written up by uh, Evergreen. Uh, what those are, are basically uh, them looking at the topology um, through G S I maps. And, and identifying where potential trails are based off their expertise. Uh, these are in no way representing a final draft or, or conclusive, you know, this is a hundred percent what we can do. There is still, you know, more onsite visits um, and, and that that need to be done to refine and, and see where things can lay, but. But based off of the topology of the area, uh, this is one of their proposals and, and the difference between the two. Uh, is really actually, um, one is more shaded to kind of really show what the topography is like to, to get the idea because. A lot of what's happening in that area is there's three or four different creeks that come off and it's all very wooded and downsloped. So uh, to try to find areas to, to build trails, uh, even general walking trails is pretty difficult because. Everything slopes downhill and there's a lot of ravines and that type of stuff. So you know, this, this is their, their first effort at that and, and what we're talking about doing is um, scheduling some time with. Uh, Public Works Planning Department to um, kind of have that sit down, you know, introduction. Evergreen to them and you know, say this is what Evergreen can do. Uh, so we'll see about getting that on the, the books, um, you know, in the next month or so. We're, we're just starting to hit our period for the club. Where uh, February, we're going to start having practices. So things get pretty busy for us at that point. Uh, but the other item to, to bring to you is, I'd mentioned, um, we're working with Evergreen as a club. To uh, build out trail stewardship and uh, we've built a program with Evergreen. To uh, teach all of the different clubs around the state, um, twenty five different clubs. Uh, how to maintain trails and how to be, you know, good land steward and work with land stewards. To, to make sure that the trails are maintained properly, that, you know, people have access. Uh, you know, and all the, the things that go along with that to, to be good stewards of, of the lands, uh, whoever owns the land. Um, and so we've scheduled that for March eighth. And so that'll be a really big win for our club because we'll be able to go out and we've already gotten approval from King County. And from Snohomish County that once we've completed this, um, this education for our coaches and even for some of our students. Uh, that we can go out and start, uh, you know, doing uh, volunteer efforts on those lands. So uh, big things uh, as far as uh, we're looking at. And obviously we have a continued interest in, in following up on the open spaces. So thank you for your time tonight.
Is there anyone else that would like to provide a public comment this evening? All right, um, seeing that, uh, public comment, comments from the audience is now closed. And with that, uh, do I have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Certainly.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, with that, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Um, I do have a few items to report. Uh, first of all, um, I just really wanted to thank council for a wonderful start to the twenty twenty five year. Um, in our last council meeting, uh, it was a lot of fun. We had some laughs and we were able to make fun of each other um, in our meeting. And do some really good work. Um, and I really appreciate um, the, the tone and attitude that everybody brought to the table. Um, and really I'm hopeful that we can continue that through uh, throughout twenty twenty five, especially as we have some really big issues on our plate. Um, to address and try and secure uh, for our community's future. So thank you for that. Um, a few items on plate, uh, for those, I'm sure uh, Mayor Portem is probably going to mention it as well, but the Snohomish Valley Governments Association Quarterly Dinner is tomorrow evening. Um, the uh, Association of Washington Cities Mayor's Exchange is this coming Thursday evening and Friday, so I will be attending that with uh, mayors from across the state. The legislative session has also started. Um, at our last meeting, we had an update from our state and federal lobbyists. Um, it is moving quickly already, uh, and we've heard a very different tone from our new governor. Um, than the outgoing governor, uh, with the major budget deficits, uh, the new governor is going to be looking at budget cuts. Um, unfortunately, um, a few things identified so far in the budget are self-sustaining funds like the Public Works Trust Fund. Uh, so I am sure that we will be working really hard to make sure that that fund, that revolving fund stays intact. Um, also wanted to remind folks, of course, we have a new presidential administration and as our lobbyist told us, uh, we do expect things to change significantly, but grant programs is where. And our avenue for success will be, um, but I also wanted to remind council and, and share that many of the executive orders that were approved and signed yesterday. Are causing significant harm to members of our community and ask folks to keep that in mind. Um, as especially our immigrant community, um, and our natural A citizen community is feeling very, very threatened right now. Um, in fact, even people being born in this country are feeling very threatened uh, by what's going on in D C and that. Uh, encourage everyone to provide support as needed, um, as well as. Uh, reach out to administration. So if folks are having issues, that we can give them a contact with their congressional delegation and help them with any agencies that may need assistance with. Um, on another note, uh, I had the honor of speaking to. Uh, the University of Washington Evan School, uh, Public Affairs class, uh, last week with council member. King County Councilmember Claudia Bel Ducci and Marsha Allen, Councilmember Wendy Waker. Um, the session was. Uh, essentially what makes a good staff person, uh, what makes a good relationship building with elected officials and staff. Um, and there were a lot of, was a lot of discussion on the roles and responsibilities of staff, um, versus. Uh, elected officials as well as the differences between uh, council mayor, former government, uh, and a council manager. For form of government, uh, excellent group of really bright, uh, young folks who are all. Either in public service now or seeking to be in public service, um, and lots of great questions. Uh, we've done this several years now and it is always a pleasure. Um, to not just uh, share with the class, but also uh, talk to the students afterwards and hear what has brought them into public service. Um, and then finally tonight, I wanted to um, bring up something uh, that one of our council members has achieved. Uh, and that is the advanced uh, certificate of municipal leadership. Um, for those that are unaware, the Association of Washington Cities has a certificate of municipal leadership program. Uh, that recognizes mayors and council members for accomplishing training in five key competency areas. Um, those competency areas, I can't find them right now offhand, but uh, a lot of it's uh, governance, um. Uh, equity, uh, also a few other items, but it is um, critically important um, training uh, that comes about and. First, it takes thirty credits for an individual to earn a certificate of municipal leadership. Um, and at least one workshop in each of the five competency areas. Um, credits are achieved by attending trainings, attending meetings, um, and attending conferences. And then there is the advanced certificate of municipal leadership, um, and this one is a little harder to get. Um, in addition to earning the original thirty uh, credits, an elected official must um, earn an additional thirty. As well as meet a community service requirement. Um, there's only been one elected official and that we're aware of in the history of the city of Duval to achieve this honor. And the second one is Councilmember Amy McHenry. Um, so I just wanted to share my deep congratulations. Um, as your colleague and yours, your friend for achieving this fantastic, um, fantastic uh, certification. And uh, thank you for all of the effort that you have done to get engaged with the Association of Washington Cities. And uh, our regional boards and committees. So thank you very much. And I was kind enough to go and get snacks for everyone so that we have a little celebration tonight. So feel free to, feel free to get up, um, and go ahead and grab yourself a snack. Um, and I'm sure we'll get the official certificate soon, um, but uh, this is such a big achievement and most elected officials never get this far. Um, the regular certificate, uh, you get it whether you submit or not. Uh, when you're qualified, you're qualified. The advanced takes significant extra effort to get there. Uh, so it's not just a commitment of attending meetings and trainings, um, there's more to it. Uh, and uh, I think that Councilmember McHenry embodies. Um, the spirit of public service and learning and continuous learning collaboration, uh, as we can tell by her participation and Mayor Portem. Mercer's participation in Los Angeles last year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Two types of cupcakes.
And that concludes my report. Uh, we don't get to do honors that. So. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to our next agenda, which is a report from city administration.
So we have a fairly short today administrator update this evening. As we all jump back into the new year and start developing all of our work plans. So next slide, please, we'll start with the development and director performance.
This new screening might come up and roll up. Uh, so good evening. Uh, last, actually before I went on vacation, we met with King County staff. They gave us some preliminary feedback. On our housing element and no surprise, we don't meet our horrible housing target. So that's pretty much what you'll. So that's pretty much what you'll see in there. And then some minor adjustments. Uh there were a lot of clarifications. I would say in general, they were really pleased with our housing element. So they really liked our housing action plan that we did last year. And I think we have a lot of great policies in that they want us to pull some of those over into our housing element so that we can begin implementation. Uh we're preparing for the transportation plan and element for its thirty-day review at PSRC. So we're super close. That'll happen in the next week. The plan was sent to Commerce and so that was a big hurdle too, because that one is sixty days uh of review, so we can't adopt until through that sixty-day period. Uh we also are planning on issuing the DNS and thanks to Laura, so she's taken on some extra duties with the transportation plan. So she drafted the CIPA checklist and the DNS. So planning is now reviewing that. We'll get that published uh by the end of the week. Uh so coming up, we have some written reports uh for land use element introduction chapter at the next council meeting. And then also the vision statement will be at the next meeting, but that will be a discussion. And we'll also likely talk about uh the difference again between a future land use map and a zoning map. Uh because we have a lot of uh new folks, both the planning commission and council since the last update of our competency plan. Next screen. Hello, next week, we have our transportation uh open house and our council is our host. So let us know. We are doing a publication as if we have quorum for both planning commission and council. You will get an email on Friday with the materials. Um we have, our expectations are just that you like hang out at maybe one of the stations, uh help us maybe take some notes, but pretty low-key. It's really for the community to come in and have dialogue with the council. Uh next screen. Uh this is just last, at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about and gave some preliminary numbers. And so our final numbers are in for twenty twenty-four. And so you can see by month, the permits issued. And then down in the right-hand quarter is just by year. So you can see we're pretty, you know, we're pretty consistent. Uh next slide. Uh this is uh residential permits issued. And you can see that can go all over the board when you look at it month by month. And that's pretty common because of the development season. A lot of times we'll actually get a lot of permits in like kind of the winter, fall time, because then they want to have them picked up and ready to roll in the, in the spring. Twenty-four inspections, we have said they were really high this year, you know, our high, our level record high. Um but they, they kind of oscillate too, just depending on the market and how many lots we have available. But this year was a banner, a banner year for us for inspections. And this only includes our building inspections. It does not include public works or planning. Next slide.
Any questions for Director Romans?
Councilmember Nappland, I was wondering if there would be a chance, um if we would have our anytime presentation on the land use element or why we've decided to do just a written report.
Uh this next meeting, we're doing a written report because we need to come back after we get the letter from the county. And that's when we'll do an actual discussion. So that was a great question. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Okay, so City Hall update, really the name of this slide should be grants. Um because for the arts and culture grants, we're um starting that season where we have to put together ideas and get um some of our grant applications in. Um so but the first thing on the list is this, uh this week, we are meeting with uh members of the Hindu community to discuss opportunities to celebrate um or recognize Holi, which is on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um I don't know if uh council members are familiar with the celebration of Holi. It's a festival of colors and probably the most iconic images are those talc powders that you see. Um but three different members of the Indian community are meeting um with me at City Hall to talk about how we might uh do something together to recognize or celebrate that holiday. Uh we had a meeting last week, uh Rita, our community events coordinator and I with uh the Chamber of Commerce and the Duval Historical Society regarding the Washington Tourism Board Grant Opportunity. Um and also other ways to collaborate, including Easter egg hunt and a variety of other things that have come up um in the last few weeks. That grant application is due on two fifteen. Um I plan to bring to council on the two-four meeting what the concept is that those uh groups have come up with. The more um successful grants for this particular grant ward are where community events uh uh community organizations are coordinating with the city is a highly competitive grant. Last year, they gave out eighteen out of a hundred different applications. Um and there's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in that program for twenty twenty-five. The range of grant um is between about seven thousand. I think the highest that was received was twenty. So they had some really good ideas um between the Chamber and the Duval Historical Society. So we'll be putting together that for the next few weeks and then uh bringing that to council on two-four. Um we have our grant concepts and development for you. So the Port of Seattle grant this year is likely going to be a mix of marketing and one new winter event. So as a reminder, with the Port of Seattle grant or um yeah, Port of Seattle, you cannot use grant money to replicate an event. So even though our train event was really, really popular, we can't use that money to create a event again. However, we are going to seek opportunities for sponsorship or donation because that was a really successful event. And we want to do it again. We just can't use Port of Seattle money to do it. Um I met with the federal lobbyists last week to discuss options for the National Endowment of the Arts Grant Application. That application, it's an arts and culture grant. It requires a minimum spend of twenty-five thousand, so finding a big project that would meet the requirements. Um there, there are quite a few limitations to it, but we do have some ideas. And then at our cultural commission meeting last week, we also asked them for ideas and we'll meet back up with the cultural commission next Monday to see what ideas that we have. But the one that seems most likely to meet the requirements of the grant and have a high enough spend would be to vitalize um the depot building and um clean that up, new floor, new bathrooms, et cetera. So but I have a lot of, a lot of people thinking about that one. So uh as we get closer to an idea, I'll bring that back to council as well. And then we're continuing to prepare concepts for when the King County grant opportunities open, um specifically Councilmember Perry. Um I know we've had quite a few presentations from the Mountain Bike Association about uh applying for grants to uh enhance mountain bike opportunities within the city. Um you know, part of that might be used for consultants because we do have to do CIPA, we have to do community engagement. So it's great that we have folks willing to work on those mountain bike um initiatives, but there's quite a good community process. And uh work with our community development team that we remain to do. Um so that's one idea. We've had folks come forward to talk about the billion in Taylor's Landing to better support um the farmers market and then looking at support for movies at the farm in partnership with the Duval Historical Society. Some of those may meet the requirement for uh the Open for Culture Grant, which will open on February first. So again, lots of grant opportunities. There's probably more work here than we can handle, but we are tracking all of it. And um making sure that we take advantage of what we can. Uh next slide. And then just a reminder, council chats. So the next one up is January twenty-eighth from six to seven at Starbucks. So uh if you think you're going to attend, please let us know because in case you get armed, we just need to notice it. And that's it for me. Happy, oh, one, one more slide.
Uh I'll take this one. Uh so GoGov is officially live. Uh you guys can actually download it with the QR code. That's up on the screen if you would like to. We're going to announce it to uh the city tomorrow on Facebook and Instagram. Um this is going to give everyone uh alerts to traffic notices, um events that are coming up. Um it's not just controlled by one city staff. It's um admins within um our buildings. So events uh you know, emergency, any, anybody can post who has that access. So um we're pretty excited and it's going to be just a direct line to our website and frequently used pages. Um the apps that are on there are the most trafficked sites um that we saw in the most recent years. So we can always add, um but for right now, uh what's on the app right now is what's traffic most. So we're excited.
Uh I have it on both my phones, personal and work, and it, it's, it's pretty nifty, very easy to use. And so we'll start populating that and then um uh letting the community know that it's here and we're going to start sending out notifications through it.
Yeah, we're going to send out flyers. Sorry, one last thing. We're going to send out flyers to in the utility billing uh mailers. So just trying to reach as many people as possible. And if you don't have a smartphone, you can also just sign up through email as well. So there's that ability too.
And now.
Councilmember Nappland?
Yeah, that was actually my question. He said some people are really hesitant to adding another app. And so if there was a way to interact with it, um as the, and yeah, I think that would be really helpful. There definitely is a population that would not um and then I also, I had asked a question following um when we approved this at that one meeting. It was kind of, we didn't have a lot of forewarning. And so um I had a question about the difference between this and the current, I think it's called Civic Plus, um because we already, that already is hosted. Uh like, I think they host our website, maybe? I'm not a hundred percent sure, but um Civic Plus, even when you look on our website, does have notification options and category. A lot of other cities use Civic Plus as kind of their notification system. And so I was thinking, are we still going to use that or are we eliminating that? And just out of curiosity, why didn't we decide to use GoGov instead of Civic Plus?
Uh City Administrator McNam?
Sure. Um so we looked at the different capabilities that it says with GoGov. There are a couple of others that do similar notifications as well as the product that is used by Civic Plus. The product that is used by Civic Plus is actually called Civic Ready. Um so it is not part of our uh subscription. We have to pay separately for it. The functionality of it is meant to be notifications for emergencies. You can build other things, but it is triple the cost of GoGo, which is why we, there's GoGo.
Thank you, City Administrator. Are there any other questions? Being none, um thank you again. Great report. Uh we move on to council reports. Does anyone, when our council have anything they'd like to share this evening? Councilmember Nappland?
Yeah, I just had an outstanding question um that I had transmitted a little while ago. And I was told that perhaps this was the best avenue to bring it up if I wanted to get a response from administration. And it was related to, I seen a post online um of someone advertising that people could come cut down some trees from their yard um to use for Christmas tree or something like that. And just looking at it, I thought, ooh, that looked like it was probably a tree that was planted as part of a new development. And I definitely did not want to draw attention to this person individually, but my, the question I had is, um just more generically, how do residents of such homes know what trees are protected? Because I, I believe some of the trees even placed in people's backyards are part of the tree plan or, you know, North Hill in particular. Um on the slope, there's a drainage easement and other things that are part of kind of our groundwater infrastructure, drainage infrastructure. And um how do they know when you buy a house? And I, and just looking at Paul Brothers, there's a ton of trees that got just recently kind of in the backyards of a bunch of homes. And how do they know whether they can cut down that tree or not? They're small, so they might look at the city uh website about the tree ordinance and it says, oh, if you're under six inch, you know, around, you can cut it down. Um so how do these new residents know? Um you know, they can just strip all of their vegetation and plant grass or, um because a lot of uh that's vegetation, trees is really, like I said, part of our groundwater infrastructure. It's to ensure you know, potentially slopes, stability, different things like that. So I'm just trying to understand if the role of the city, the HOA, how it goes, how people even know um what they bought. So I don't know, who would answer that?
So on newer projects, uh they're actually within our flat documents. And then they're also given to the new homeowner on where saved trees are within the development. So that's how we deal with that, whether or not a landowner is like absorbing that, right? While they're doing all their paperwork, it's probably set for another question. Um our newer projects also require yard trees. And so that's the one where they actually get and sign the site plan, because I've confirmed that with our newer developers. So hopefully they'll keep that. But for Fiona's example, in North Hill, for the most part, there weren't any required replanting trees. There were specifically on lots. So they technically could go in and remove some of those trees if they are not So like there's that groundwater easement that is kind of on some of its deeper slopes or walls and different things. Um there's, so there are some landscape buffers there and they do have required landscaping on those. But most of it's um not trees. A lot of it is like ground cover and shrubs with some trees, because we can't plant trees. We couldn't plant trees everywhere in that area. And so we would have to just do more education with the neighbors. And in fact, we get a lot of complaints in some of our neighborhoods when trees do come down. So we try to work with our neighbors. Because some people are starting to put in turf and some people are taking out trees. Some people are putting in walls. And so it's just a lot to keep track of. And we're doing the best we can. And all we can continue to do education and hope that people read the newsletters. And uh we offer to all of the HOAs that will come out and do presentations every year for them. And that's usually where we would present a couple of slides on trees and vegetation management.
Computer plus. Any other councilmembers? Go ahead, Councilmember McHenry.
Um yes, you hit on the SPGA's tomorrow night. So I'm going to that. I don't know if anyone else is. Um and then a reminder, if you haven't already been registered, is it the nineteenth and twentieth? Is it AWC um Legislative? Is it a something or conference? I can't remember. Yeah, City Action Days down in Olympia. And then also coming up in March should be the um, the Washington DC uh conference, which we have three free registrations for. So just a reminder, this is a great year to go if you haven't gone and you'd like to go. I would like to go. So um hopefully we have some others who want to come along.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, if someone wants to go, please let me know. I already know, I've already um heard from Mayor Portem, uh Councilmember McHenry. Anybody else wants to attend to either one, please let me know so I can get you sorted with all of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wait, um anyone else before I go back to Councilmember Nappland? Councilmember Nappland?
I did register for SPJA. I don't know if you uh received it. Okay, maybe I'll follow up with them. Um and then the last question I had had to do with um the muffler. And I had some, I had some questions, missed the deadlines, and I thought I would ask tonight. And so I don't know if um now.
Please ask your question. And then it is a significant amount of work. So council will need to, to determine if they want to uh support that.
Oh, okay. So um what I was wondering is how many um stops or citations we've had. Kind of seems like this issue came up, started coming up maybe two, three years ago, um related to mufflers. Like um you know, stop citations. And then I was wondering, um because it on social media, there was a comment about, you know, it'd be very difficult to actually possibly enforce some of these. It could be challenged or, and I was wondering if we had had any citations that were challenged in court and um if there was an issue there. And then my last question was just, um have we been able to make contact with? It seems like there's one vehicle in particular that gets mentioned again and again and again. And so I was just curious if we had been able to make contact with that individual or the household parents possibly of. And so I was just curious if we had been able to make contact with that individual or the household parents possibly of that individual, just, um. Kind of out of curiosity, I think the community was wondering some of these things.
So stops and citations aren't tracked specifically by muffler. Um, most of our stops that we make have multiple violations, not just one. So a prime example might be we stopped somebody for a muffler. Then it also has an insurance violation or maybe a registration violation or a license registration. Uh, violation, so we'd have to look at every citation that we've written to see what the charges are. Um, as for looking at the type of citation or muffler. It'll be a lot of handwork that we have to go through and, and figure that out and go through it. Um, don't know if it'll be accurate, I know that we have stopped some vehicles and issued warnings, but we also issued quite a few citations. Um, as regarding challenges in court, we did not track that whatsoever. Once an infraction is issued to somebody, they either, uh, pay the fine, mitigate it, or go to trial. Uh, for a hearing, and they also, that fourth one, they just don't pay us. Um, we don't track that, um, it wouldn't be a lot of work list to go through and look for that aspect. Um, and if you're looking for a change over the last three years, we're talking quite a bit of, of citations or infractions to look at. So, um, as it relates to that one vehicle that you're questioning about, I have no idea which one it is. Um, I probably just performed meeting tonight, uh, somebody had contact with the RO of that vehicle. Um, as we've been trying to reach that person for a while, so I know that we've had contact, if it is the one we're thinking of, it's a gray Volkswagen. Does that sound like?
I think that's the one I found here.
Yeah, um, we've met that person a number of times, um. It probably has some court hearings coming up. And, uh, we know that we have had contact with the RO of that vehicle, made them aware of the issue.
Great, I appreciate it.
Um, so is, does council want, uh, the police chief to go and look at, um, citations and determine how many are related to mufflers? Seeing head nods now.
Um, I prefer we, you know, at least my per, per specific, sorry, preference, personal preferences based on the feedback we got tonight from the community to focus on. On the, the three or four that I think we documented, of which the vehicle you mentioned was one of. And, uh, um, and then sort of, you know, proceed from, from there, because I think that would address at least the community feedback.
The overall, the overall feeling that I have based on the conversation I had tonight was, um. Our perceptions are correct, that it's probably four or five cars that are closing, must be everybody in town. And, um, our officers have been instructed to, to some targeting enforcement. Deal with those issues, uh, if we can contact the ROs, we will, but the registered as we will. Uh, but, um, we also know that they're not all kids, they may be kids to me because I'm older. Um, but I know that, um, you have to be thinking to own a car and a lot of those are owned by the individuals on this site. So, um, it is not necessarily, um, a juvenile issue, it is an adult issue.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the gist of my question was really just to open up a discussion of, you know, have we been able to issue citations? Has, you know, are we running into problems that can perhaps require additional assistance from council with an ordinance or, I don't know. So now like, we already have the tools.
Well, as council meeting, I did state that I don't believe that we need a specific ordinance for this, so we can handle it there. I think the RCD that we have, which relates to mufflers or equipment, it's a technically an equipment violation. Um, gives us a vast amount of latitude towards this. It doesn't pigeonhole us into, doesn't meet a certain decibel, doesn't meet, um, you know, isn't. Just because the car is using muffler and going fast, the car can be going the speed limit. And we could try to get a muffler violation, so, um. We are, um, aggressively looking at this and, um, I think our period of. Um, we've had more than one contact, but pretty much all of you stopped there.
Okay, that's great, that's, that's what I was kind of curious about, yeah.
Sometimes they learn, sometimes they, and so we'll take whatever action we believe is necessary.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, any other council reports this evening?
Uh. Follow up question, I guess on the same subject, um, as far as, you know, determining if we actually have had a positive impact, uh, or, or not. Uh, and I know we've been at this for, for a while. Uh, it's no- nothing, no- nothing new on our, on our plate. And, you know, my, uh, my own experiences, we haven't really had a, a positive impact yet. And I think, you know, everybody that was here tonight and, and the public general would like to, uh, like to know that. Uh, and so, chief, I guess I'm asking, asking you, because I don't have any great ideas, but I'm asking you, what do you think we could use as a measurement of, of that? Uh, pure complaints, uh, you know, what, you know, what do you think would be an actual measure?
I think there's two hundred things, when you talk about pure complaints, uh, I'm hoping that that would be the case, that people would. Not hear the violations as much as call us versus getting just so frustrated that they don't even call anymore. Um, and so that's sometimes when you have a large area of, of problems that, uh, if they believe they're not being heard. And I think tonight was a great exercise in allowing people to be heard and having that going through that process. Um, but I would hope that it would be less violations, less complaints would be the target on that aspect. Uh, the law enforcement, um, has a certain rule, so we don't pay laws, we enforce the laws. And, uh, the enforcement actually taken is one step in trying to correct the acre. We don't have the legal authority to mandate that that person shins their muffler. That is something that a judge would have to do in, in their process. And, but we can have discussion, I can have discussions with, uh, the judges at Isaku Court to see how they're handling those things. But, um, I believe that the best judge of this would be, um, less complaints, less reduction. I think that our, the residents of Duval, um, haven't given. Uh, I think they truly want to have this solved and, and, um. Some of them I've been in contact with before and, and going through that process, so I think we're making it that, it's just not a. It's not something that's gonna just happen like that, it's something that, sometimes there needs to be additional reinforcement of that individual ones. It's what, I kind of use the analogy similar to what we do for speeding violations. Uh, if we have a roadway that has a high speeding count, maybe a lot of, can aggressively work that area for a certain period of time. To tamp down the speeding on that roadway. But if that's all we do and never come back to it, the speeds are gonna increase again.
Exactly.
More, so we have to continually be aware of it, we have to continually, uh, work towards that process. And once, um, we start issuing infractions for these type of violations, um, we don't go back to warnings. Um, and so every violation that we stop, probably at this point, they're getting some, uh, paper to take with them. And the other aspect is that there is a step violation that occurs with muffler violations. The first violation is one hundred fifty-five dollars, um, and then the second violation doubles down. And the third violation maxes out that, uh, that amount, so it gets pretty costly, uh, once you reach that third, third stop, so.
And, and what, so I can ask a follow up question.
Go ahead.
What, what, what if they don't pick, you said that's also an option, what happens then?
Uh, then they get what's called a bail cure here, and the potential is that they don't have enough, if they have a certain number on their driver record. It will be revealed.
Okay, thank you.
And they'll become suspended.
That's.
Right. Anyone else? See, now we'll go ahead and move on to our next item of business, which is a public hearing for our capital facilities plan. Uh, Larissa Brandell, our city engineer, will be presenting this evening. Um, and as I open the public hearing, I will go ahead and read the rules into the record. Um, prior to, uh, administrative gavel, so. In adherence to the regulations outlined for public hearings before this Duval City Council, chapter nine of the City Council Procedures Manual. Any individual seeking to address the council during the designated public comment segment must comply with the following procedures. First, sign in on their provided forms specific to the public hearing. And second, thoroughly complete all pertinent sections of the said form. Upon commencement of the hearing, as announced by the chair, typically the mayor, the city clerk will present the chair with the sign in sheet. Subsequently, the chair will proceed with the agenda for the public hearing. Each speaker will be summoned to the podium in the order listed on the sign in form. Where they must communicate their name and, if relevant, their address, affiliation with any organization or group being represented. And their corresponding role or position within said organizations. Time limits for speaking engagements are three minutes for individuals representing themselves and five minutes for those. Representing a group or organization unless otherwise determined by majority vote of the council present. The city clerk will monitor and enforce these time limits, setting a timer for each speaker. Comments should be pertinent to the subject matter of the public hearing and respectfully addressed to the city council. With personal remarks being deemed inappropriate. Disorderly conduct, including disruptive behavior such as booing or harassment, will not be tolerated. And may result in removal from the premises. Speakers may alternatively submit written statements, which will be added to the official record by the city clerk. Questions posed during the hearing will not be answered immediately, but may be addressed at the chair's discretion following the close of the comment period. Copies of city council public hearing procedures will be available upon request and distributed to attendees of the council. At the outset of each public hearing session conducted by the Duval City Council. With that, I'll open the public hearing and welcome Ms. Brandell, thank you for being here.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, um, and anyone who's might be online or in the audience. So, uh, we've finally come to the conclusion of hopefully adopting relatively soon our six-year capital facilities plan, from next slide. So this is just a, a brief, um, it's the WAC, the Washington Administrative Code for, um, compliance. For having this six-year C, uh, capital facilities plan. Um, it's to ensure that public facilities and services necessary to support development. Uh, are adequate to serve the development at the time the development is available. But occupancy and use without decreasing current service levels below locally established minimum standards. Next slide, please. So some changes from our previously adopted, uh, six-year capital facilities plan is, uh, we adopted project lists only. Um, so there weren't words there, we didn't look at the, we didn't really go into looking at funding options, we didn't kind of identify. Um, sources of fundings that are allocated for projects that were, um, planning on being done in that six-year look. Um, so the new six-year CFP includes those items as well as an inventory of existing facilities, um, for our utilities. Uh, and projects that are on the lists. So this, oh, that's good, the, um, it's just kind of a, a breakdown of the really, uh, longer requirements of the WAC. So we developed a six-year plan to finance, uh, needed capital facilities. We base projections on existing revenue laws and ordinances, uh, we identify the funding sources. Uh, we reliably public or private funding sources. Um, include financial, uh, input from external service providers when and if applicable. Um, if new revenue sources are required, uh, it, we're to estimate the expected funding and outline those actions to secure it. Um, and then there's an im- an implementation strategy to integrate funding actions. Um, into development regulations and or other record, uh, mechanisms. And we're updating it, the idea is that we will update it with the biennial budget. And, you know, continue to keep an eye on it, when new projects come up, we'll be able to, um, identify those funding sources in order to get it done. Using public money, you have to identify that you're gonna use it, and this is the mechanism for which we do that. Um, and then evaluations to ensure financial planning stays ahead of concurrent needs. Next slide. Um, we did our public hearing, uh, with the planning commission and they have submitted their recommendation to adopt to the council. Next slide. Uh, so the draft is posted online, it has been posted online for, um, a few months now. Um, we're here tonight doing the city council public hearing and we anticipate, um, to adopt. Tonight, potentially, or if we need to come back and do any changes, uh, the next council meeting on February fourth.
Thank you. Um, but does anyone sign up for public comment this evening?
Um, yes, but I'm not curious they're here, Tamara Bernstein. Debbie Calvert. John Calvert. And Darren Bennett. Excellent.
All right, thank you, um, with that, we will close the hearing. And we'll move on to our first item of new business, Agenda Bill twenty-five dash zero five, contract for services related to the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan. Uh, for discussion and our decision with Director Thomas.
Good evening, mayor, council and members of the audience. I also have our senior planner Naomi in the room as well. Uh, she did a very thorough job of reconciling where we're at on contract to date, both budget and tasks. And because we are taking, um, six additional months to complete the comp plan, we're going to new contract. That's just over eighty thousand dollars, which is the remaining amount left that we budgeted for. Uh, we are off track a little bit, a lot of that came from when we did the RFP in the scope. The legislature had not gifted us a, a new housing target really for affordable housing units. So we did get off track a little bit, but we are definitely back on track. I think the biggest challenge that we'll have is that we do have a very limited scope and timeline. And staff is gonna be doing some additional work, and that means Larissa, Naomi and I, and maybe even some of our team members. So that we can get it over the finish line. But if you look at, if you have the, uh, chance to look at the agenda bill and information, you can see that it's clear of. As essentially a timeline of where we're going to adopt that, and that is mid-year. We don't feel any, we not feel comfortable going any further than that, because as it is, we are out of compliance. And we are also taking on all the policy work that was also gifted to us. By the legislature over the last couple of years, so we have a really tight timeline and a lot of work within our community development department. Um, I do wanna let Naomi come online, um, just so that she can add any additional pertinent information that she wants to share.
Good evening, council, um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, um, I'm, uh, I apologize for, um, coming in remotely, I'm, it would have, I wouldn't have gotten to the council meeting in person on time. Um, I just wanna say that, uh, even though we are in a tight, a tighter budget and timeline now. Uh, a large portion of the heavy lifting has been completed. And so the remainder of the work that's going to be done under that budget is going to include bringing everything to the finish line. Which our goal is, um, between the months of May and the beginning of June. Um, even though we'll be out of compliance for a little bit, it isn't going to have any dramatic effects on, effects on anything that we're doing right now. Um, that we can see, um, in addition, you're not gonna see too many changes on your end. Uh, you're still going to get the same information. The, the, after the land use settlement, you're going to see three more elements. And those all are pretty lean, because they were the remaining elements that were dependent on the plans we were doing, which we've been presenting throughout the last couple of months. Including the transportation plan, the capital facilities plan, which is the public hearing for it tonight. And then also the parks, trails and open space plan, which was just adopted. So we're almost there and we are excited to get this done and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um, does council have any questions or, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make, make a motion, but I have a, would just quick clarify a question based on, on, on what, um. Was, was stated, you indicated this was sort of the application of the remaining funds, the scope of work. There is no, and, and obviously you, you defined the schedule in terms of when the target, the, the eighty thousand, I think that's in here, that's the remaining being allocated. That will cover all the script work, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to clarify, I was assuming it was based on.
It will.
I wanted to set down, maybe, but I wanted to make sure.
It will cover the scope of work as long as we stay on task.
Did you wanna make that?
Uh, no, uh, I do want, I do wanna ask a question though. So the, uh, the, the contract that we're asked to approve today for the com- competency plan. Uh, my question is, does this include the land use settlement, the land use element goals and policy? Oh, land use settlement, future land map, sorry, the land use settlement goals and policy and also the economic development element?
So we've, technically, we've completed the economic development element that has come to council. So, over the next couple of meetings, you'll have other elements. Over the next couple of meetings, you'll have other elements come that you haven't seen yet. So that's the capital facilities element, the transportation element, and the parks element. We are also still working on the land use element, but we have a final draft and that's gonna be coming to council. But we also have the housing element that we need to finish up. But we're just in a holding pattern right now because we're waiting for King County to finish its review. And that'll be the first week of February, and then we'll bring that information back and we'll have a discussion.
Okay, so.
You get two questions and then you go.
Okay, so okay, second question is, how 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 quickly do we need the involvement of this this uh? Oh, I forget who it is, uh, the uh, you know, with the contract, uh, the. Uh, place, the. Place that we're contracted with, how quickly do we need that?
Uh, we need it this evening because we need to continue uh to do our work so that we can complete it in June. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
I can um help answer the question too regarding where we're at. Um, uh, and I can't tell, is it um? Councilmember Schaefer that asked the question or?
Yeah, yeah.
I recognized your voice. Um, so the land use, and and I can tell you this because I was looking at everything, the land use settlement, a majority of the money that was spent for the land use settlement to be completed. Um, occurred in the previous contract in the previous budget. So the remainder of the money that you see in that budget. Um, is for finishing up the land use settlement. So that's why there's a little bit of money dedicated to some of those elements that you've seen before. Because now we're doing um the final touches on it. Of course, um, all of you are going to get a chance to see all of the elements together. So that's going to be where it's going to be wrapped up and you'll see a draft of all of that put together. Um, but the land use settlement is about. Ninety-five to ninety-eight percent done.
Thank you. Um, city administrator, Mike Now.
Yeah, I think um, one of the important things to clarify is. This uh agenda bill is to continue funding the consultant we already have. That has already done the work.
Yeah.
And that is already budgeted. So part of the budget deliberations back in September and October identified that. Need development would be effectively rolling over the remainder of the money that was dedicated. To the comp plan into this calendar year. This just effectuates what council already proved in the budget.
Uh, councilmember McHenry.
I I just wanted to make a motion. I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-five dash oh five, approving a professional services contract with AHBL for comprehensive transportation planning services.
Certainly.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
That's a motion, right?
Okay, and I'll I'll keep this brief. First of all, this is absolutely no reflection of law, law, or Naomi, or any of their excellent work on on this. Uh, uh, they, I think they've done, you know, a uh, a terrific job on the competency plan. I know there's a lot in there, a lot, it's very difficult. The the thing that I, that you guys have heard me, the council has heard me complain about before, and I will keep voicing my complaints. Is the requirements being shoved down our throats by the state and by the county. Uh, I don't know how many you uh read the land use settlement in detail, but there's a number of items uh in there. That uh will only uh serve to increase the population of of Duval. Force growth on on Duval whether we want it or not. So this is being shoved down our throats. Uh, we need to be aware of that. I'm not sure what we can do about it. Uh, to tell you the truth. Uh, but uh nonetheless, this isn't something we should take lightly. We should be fully aware of what's happening here. Uh. And again, it's being directed by the state and the and the county, I believe mostly by the state itself. Uh, that's that's my call.
Okay. Um, councilmember McHenry.
I just quickly wanted to say something that I actually meant to mention in my council report that is related to this. That I attended the growth uh management policy board. That's one of the two growth-related regional committees that I got on as an alternate this year. And, you know, for, it would mean something different to everybody, but, you know, might seem discouraging to you. I mean, they are holding very, very firm. On what they're delving out to each jurisdiction. Um, hearing that directly from the source is different than how you're hearing it second or third hand, but. Um, it's all the same message. So not to discourage, but just let you know that I, it's a very strong, firm message that they're pushing on it. Um, I don't know what else we could do. I don't think this is the hill we can, you know. Uh, dying on, so to speak, to change anything, but that we need to talk regionally.
Yeah.
Um, let's see if the other council members have anything they'd like to add to this. Go ahead, councilwoman Schaefer.
Okay, no, and and thank you uh for that. That's that's good to know. We're bad to one of you. But uh, uh, I I don't think it's the appropriate time, but I would like to understand what legal options could any. We have to uh deter some of this that's uh uh being forced on us. And the answer from Oscar may be none, uh, but I'm not convinced of that. There are municipalities uh. Uh, pursuing uh reconciliation uh of the G of the GMA. Uh, I don't know if that's an option open to us or or not. But uh, before we do any kind of final vote on the uh land use settlement, I would really like to understand. If there are any other options at all uh open to us. Uh, other than just falling in line and approving it like everyone else in the state.
Mr. Ray, if you have anything you'd like to add, please.
Y- y- yeah, uh, so that is an interesting question. My. Perception is that most jurisdictions are. Attempting to comply with the um requirements that are coming from um uh the county and and the state. Um, it's one I I don't feel like I can answer now definitively, whether there's nothing we can do or. Here are a couple of options you could consider from um a legal standpoint. It's gonna require me to um. Do a little bit more work and maybe uh check in with some of my colleagues to find out. Um, how how other jurisdictions are are handling it. My perception is is that it would be a tough road to hoe, but um, but I'm not willing to say that. Uh, with a hundred percent certainty. And if uh the city wants me to um do a little bit more work in that area, I'm I'm happy to 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 do that and provide an opinion.
I personally would like to see that. Uh, I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels.
All right, um, councilmember Napland.
Yeah, I I would be supportive of that as well. And I I know there's been talk amongst other jurisdictions sort of feeling. Forced to um. Modify how they plan to use land or forced to provide um. More development than honestly our growth targets. All of our infrastructure is, uh, you know, the roads that connect us. From here to Redmond, everywhere. It's all based on these growth targets. And now we have these new targets for affordable housing and and cramming homes in, not requiring parking spaces, all of these different things that are. Um, were being required to create a comprehensive plan that will likely far exceed. Our growth targets. So now we're gonna be in a disaster when it comes to infrastructure. And so I really feel um like we aren't alone, especially among small jurisdictions to be put in a spot. And I really like to see what our legal options are, what other cities are doing. And I I do remember when this came up before. We um, we really wanted to make sure our city was writing letters, kind of lobbying, saying. Hey, you're kind of asking for two things that do not work together, right? Um, you can't tell a, hey, we don't want you to grow too much, but oh, by the way, you have to add a thousand affordable units. That put you a thousand units over. I mean, this is an exaggeration, but not too much of an exaggeration. Um. So I would like to know um what our options are. Are we being forced to create a comprehensive plan and a land use plan? That our residents don't want, we aren't gonna have infrastructure to handle. Um, are we really legally forced to modify our land use? Um, to kind of contradict other goals.
Very welcome. So um. Before I ask council question, I'm just gonna remind folks as well that every single one of us on this dais. Took an oath to uphold the laws of the state of Washington and the Constitution of the United States. Growth management and the rules that we are following are the laws of Washington State. Uh, there may be some legal avenues um. To uh pursue things, but as it stands right now, we all have a legal obligation to follow the law, uh, which includes. Completing a comprehensive plan. Um, now. Is there more support on council to ask for legal time to be spent on this issue? Councilwoman Russell.
Yeah, I I really don't see any need, um, because this is nearly not gonna change the outcome of what we're gonna be doing or. Maybe something in the future, but.
Councilmember McHenry.
I started with this because, you know, I wanna know, I just don't think we're gonna. I I don't know how much is actually there to review yet because there are communities that are communities challenging it very. Hard. Um, but we, uh, you know, are we gonna find out the outcomes of that in time? Um, and we need to keep working on this. So I I don't actually think it'd be beneficial to do a legal review right now. I wish it was, but I guess that's just my opinion that I don't think we're gonna know anything for a little while.
Uh, Mayor Richard Mercer.
Yeah, my perspective is somewhat echoes uh with. What councilmember McHenry said. I I think there is. We brought this up and discussed it a lot, but there's some dissatisfaction with sort of the way, the rules of the road. But. I think the other acknowledgement is these are the rules of the road that we operate in today. I think a lot of our challenges. You know, beyond the pure question of do we grow or not grow. Is really more around infrastructure, which is not a state covered. I mean, it is, it's, but it's more of a county discussion. So lots of. Pieces, I think, that that make it suboptimal. That said, I think, given some of our other budget constraints that we discussed this evening around levies and and sales tax initiatives. I would prefer another jurisdiction carry the water. And we lever leverage that. I mean, the analysis, I think, you know, definitely leverage the learnings, but I think given the turnaround in the 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 um. Essentially legislative requirements in terms of submitting this documentation within the timeframe, it's sort of. Not necessarily throwaway work, but it's not, this isn't the right time to 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 basically do this investigation.
Thank you. Uh, all right, any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. And just a little side note, um, these rules and regulations do take years to come to light. Um, and change. So uh, for those that haven't been advocating at the regional and state level, that is the avenue to. Making these things not be in place. Um, so that is the only avenue to not having state law passed uh that dictates what we can and can't do within our jurisdiction. Um, advocacy is the number one way to um get what we need for our communities. Um, and so. Uh, if anyone would like to, as councilmember McHenry spoke about earlier with uh Association of Washington Cities, City Action Days. Our lobbyists have discussed it. Uh, please do join us in that effort. It can't just be one or two people. It takes the entire council to. Do this work and the councils of other cities and towns as well. So, thank you. All right, um, moving on to our last item of business, Agenda Bill twenty-five dash zero six. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty-four capital facilities plan. Uh, would council like to have more discussion on this? Councilmember Napland.
Yeah, I had a question about it because we we hadn't had a chance to, yeah.
Okay, okay, um. City engineer Grindel. Um, and go ahead and ask your question, councilmember Napland.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to clarify, and I, and the explanation is probably pretty obvious. Um. The numbers in there for the transportation is all old, um, because we haven't approved a new one.
Correct.
Okay.
And I wanted to um also point out, as Director Lenishewski. Um, pointed out to me earlier was that the numbers are also, I need to add a note that says that they're in thousands. So they need to be multiplied. So they're missing a couple zeros. Um, but yes, they are actually what we have currently adopted in our six-year tip. Um, so once we go through our transportation plan update, we create a new six-year tip. That will go through its own process, then that'll be adopted into um this plan through the biennial.
That'd be amazing. The ones that always stick out to me is the intersection of Woodville-Duval. It's not gonna cost less than two million dollars to restructure that intersection.
Oh, yeah.
And we know Third Avenue is not gonna cost like forty-five hundred dollars. We've already spent that and we haven't started most of it.
Ab- absolutely. And we do have, we're working with our consultant Transpo um to update those project cost numbers as well. So um, that should be coming uh for a council discussion as soon as we kind of get that finalized. I just got. The Excel from them and they're still making tweaks, so.
Okay.
Um, it's it's coming.
Okay.
For transportation.
Yes, thank you.
And then there's some other scrivener errors and some like formatting issues that I need to fix within a document that doesn't impact anything other than. Um, some formatting changes that happen between the Word document and the PDF creation, so.
But are you recommending we wait to adopt on the fourth?
No.
No, okay.
All right, um, any other council questions or would someone like to make a motion? Uh, councilmember McHenry.
I'd like to move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-five dash oh six, approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty capital facilities plan.
Sir.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, um, we have no further business. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned at eight sixteen p.m. Thank you all.